Motion to approve the agenda with those additions.
So moved.
Motion by Keith.
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Approval of the minutes, August 3rd, 2016, regular meeting. Is there any changes, corrections, clarification needed? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the August 3rd, 2016 meeting?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dave, do I have a second?
No, second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Public open forum, is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Seeing no one, the public open forum is now closed. We have no public hearings tonight. Will then bring us to our reports and presentations, Police Department, Brian?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, we have the activity report for July 2004, or 2016. Uh, very busy month, of course. Uh, we had ten alarm calls, we had four assaults, we had, uh, four K-9 assists, twenty-three personal assists, fourteen assists for other agencies, uh, we did ten bar checks, uh, we had sixty-eight citizen contacts, we had three domestic assaults, fifteen, uh, arrests for driving on a revocated license or canceled license, we made twenty small amount of marijuana and drug paraphernalia arrests, we had eight, uh, gas no pays, seven harassment complaints, thirteen intoxicated person calls, twenty-one matter of information calls, twenty-eight medicals, three misdemeanor arrests, uh, warrant arrests, that is, uh, we had four lost kids calls, I think one of those was parents, lost parents.
[laughing]
And ten accidents, we had thirteen, thirteen lost property calls, thirteen special detail, uh, events that we did, and that's, of course, during Sinclair Lewis days in the fair. Uh, we had, uh, thirty suspicious calls, and we had eight thefts, we gave out two-hundred-and-seventy-five verbal warnings, uh, we did twenty-one welfare checks, so we had a total activity for the month of, uh, nine oh four, or, uh, yeah, nine oh four in calls, we had six-hundred-and-twenty-nine in verbal warnings, of course, two-seventy-five. Uh, we worked forty hours of, uh, TZD, um, during July, and we used a lot of that time to, uh, assist with the, uh, Sinclair Lewis days, and, of course, during the fair, so we could use the overtime, uh, it's a good excuse to use the TZD to get the extra car on to work during those shifts, so that works pretty well. So it's a good time to do that. If you notice, we really stepped up our, uh, citizen contacts, uh, fill with the environment and law enforcement right now, I've told our guys to, you know, to start documenting a lot of our, you know, before we haven't been documenting, but they, you're gonna see more documentation, just simple contacts that we make with people, just trying to get out there and, and PR with people and, and, uh, try to set good examples and good rapport with our community and, and continue to do that. So you'll see the numbers probably go up there, hopefully, a lot more, uh, with us making, at least documenting it more than we have, I shouldn't say we really stepped it up, but we're probably documenting it more. Um, that's about all I have, I think.
Um, Chief, I wanted to say, one of those suspicious vehicles was one that I called in.
Yeah.
And the suspi- the, the response time was less than sixty seconds. They were there right away.
That sounds pretty typical.
Yep, it is.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, I appreciate that, thank you.
Any other questions? Um, one thing, Brian, I was gonna ask you, on dog bites, I noticed about once a month we get that listed in there.
Yeah.
What's the, what call that we're going, are we putting that dog in impound or because, in watch for rabies or anything like that, or how are we doing that?
Not all of them we are doing that, uh, some of them are, were, uh, you know, it's a neighbor thing, or someone walking in this, say, you know, we wanna, and they didn't wanna press charges, or they just wanted to make it documented, and basically, it's a lot of those end up just being documented.
Okay.
You know, if it's a real vicious bite, or something that's real serious, a lot of them are just with these dog bites, or, you know, pants leg and, uh, and, you know, barely breaking the skin, but if it's a more serious one, for sure, we are, uh, we usually take the dog, or, or have them make sure it's kennelled up, and we get their medical records, the dog's medical records, and, uh, for ten days, at least.
It's just one of those things I notice every month, we got one.
Yeah.
One near enough.
There's quite a few calls with dogs, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions for Brian?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Planning Commission report, Sarah.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, um, in your packet, I believe you have a copy of our agenda, which is on page...
Thirteen?
Yep, thirteen, sounds good. Uh, we had our meeting last night, we had a public hearing for the preliminary and final plat for the WH Kate's Estates First Edition, which is an action item on your, a little later on the agenda, uh, the building report, and then also, we are set a public hearing for the, in September thirteenth, we'll have a public hearing for the temporary family healthcare dwellings of 2016, and in their packet, I had to review from what the state of Minnesota had, and also a review of that from the League of Minnesota Cities. So that will be on our docket for our next month in September. And then, uh, informational items, at our last council meeting, you did approve the RFP for the count plan, and so far, I have gotten four email inquiries asking to send me the information to them, and I'm getting agencies from Washington State, so, so, yeah, as soon as it hit the internet, we were getting emails to, uh, for more information, so. Do you have any questions for me?
Questions? Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Takes us to our action items, approved affirmation of fire relief increase.
Okay, as Agenda Item 7A, uh, the Saxton Fire Relief has approved and is requesting affirmation by the City Council that its annual benefit rate be increased by seventy-five dollars per year of service. This will bring the total benefit per year of service to nineteen hundred dollars, and this is paid to eligible firefighters at the time of retirement, and that is calculated based on their years of service. The investments of the Relief Association are the source of revenue for this, and the Relief Association is funded through state aid and municipal contributions, uh, they do have an investment portfolio, and every year, the state auditor reviews that to make sure the portfolio will cover any of the, um, retirements, as if everybody were to retire at one time, which we know they're not gonna do. Uh, this one makes up a ninety-eight percent, is what their portfolio is right now, of this nineteen hundred dollars, if everybody were to leave at the same time. Um, I do have the history for the past twenty years for you here, you can see that there was, uh, six or seven years in a row that we did no increase whatsoever, and so back then, in 2013, we kind of embarked on a, a seventy-five dollar per year increase to kind of plague a little bit of catch-up, so that's what this is. So what they are requesting tonight is to acknowledge the Fire Relief Association's increase in the benefit amount from eighteen twenty-five to nineteen hundred dollars per year of service.
Questions, comments? Does that put us in line with basically other fire departments that are volunteering them?
We're, we're actually still, uh, below average on years, there's some that are way up thirty-five hundred, four thousand, and there's some that are nine hundred.
Any other questions or comments? Call the question, do I have a motion to acknowledge Fire Relief Association's increase in the benefit amount from one thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars to nineteen hundred dollars?
So moved.
Motion by Dave, do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Heidi. Any other questions or comments? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Approved Resolution 2016 dash fifty-seven, approving preliminary and final plat WH Kate's Estates First Edition.
Uh, the Planning Commission held the public hearing last night, as you heard Sarah say, and then this evening, I gave you an updated copy of the plat that has some corrections on it, and also shows all the easements that are on there, and they weren't on the one that you had received in your packet. So you have both the preliminary plat that has all the topography on it, and then you have the final plat, which shows, uh, the topography is not showing, and then it's the easement. So this was kind of the things, and it kind of hits the things the Planning Commission asked last night about where the easements are and everything, so, um, this is just three lots, uh, block one lots one, two, and three. Kate's Estates Drive is, the cul-de-sac is all we're plating here, because the other part of the road is in another plat adjacent, so that would, so this includes the three lots plus that Kate's Estates Drive, and then we reserve utility easements to go south from Kate's Estates Drive around the Indian Mound out to Maine for extension of future utilities, and then also, we have an easement along the south end of the property for the relocation of the power line. So we have those two things that are, are in there. Other than that, um, it's very much the same as what you had seen earlier, and, uh, I noticed that in the, in the preliminary plat, they have WH Kate's First Edition, and on the final, it's, I guess, and the other one is WH Kate's First Edition, so, well, or Kate's Estates, so Estates is in one and not the other, so there's some little corrections like that, that we'll still have to do. But, um, the, at the public hearing last night, we did have people in attendance, a couple different people came and spoke, or most asked questions, more of it had to do with what's gonna happen to the property after it's platted than the actual plat itself. You know, this, what we're doing here is simply dividing into three lots, there will be a conditional use permit public hearing for development of the property down the road, and so right now, it's, it's simply making it into three lots, of which are varying sizes. So what we're asking you, for you tonight, is to approve Resolution 2016 dash fifty-seven, approving the preliminary and final plat of WH Kate's First Edition.
Questions, comments? So I take it we didn't have anybody opposed to?
We didn't have anybody opposed to it, and it was more, um, what's gonna, what are we gonna see here, what's going on?
Any other comments, concerns from the council?
That, that utility easement is vacated?
It's not vacated yet, no, the power line is still there.
So, so the final one is, you had a little blank to be filled in later?
Yeah, it does.
All right.
I noticed that as well.
Okay, any other questions? Call the question, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2016 dash fifty-seven, approving preliminary and final plat of WH Kate's Estates First Edition?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Any other comments, questions? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven C, approve Resolution 2016 dash fifty-eight, abatement contract for private development.
At the last council meeting, the City Council kind of approved the terms, these terms that are written in here, and so now those have been put into the contract, which, of course, you saw this contract earlier without the terms, so you kind of saw the form of the contract first, then you saw what the terms are gonna be, now this is it all put together. Uh, and we will correct a couple typos that Warren picked out and brought to my attention. Otherwise, this would be the contract that would be executed by the developer and the city, and, uh, essentially, what it does is he's gonna perform on his side, and then we're gonna do our part, and then the property taxes that he pays will be diverted back to reimburse us for those costs. That's kind of it in a nutshell, so we're asking to approve Resolution 2016 dash fifty-eight, approving the abatement contract for private development and authorize execution of the agreements.
Questions, comments? As Ricky pointed out, I did find a few, um, clerical things as far as misspellings and stuff like that, and then another one, if you've got your contract, um, I pointed out where it is on page four of the contract, down in letter C, says the developer will use reasonable efforts to secure all permits, licenses, and approve. I asked her to change that, the developer will secure all permits.
Good.
Not use reasonable efforts.
Good.
So, that is this language that kind of bugged me a little bit, because...
Yep.
That's a loophole, as far as I'm concerned, so. Is there any other questions, comments? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2016 dash fifty-eight, approving abatement contract for private development and authorize execution of agreement?
So moved.
Motion by Keith, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against.
Good catch, Mayor.
Yes, good job.
Seven D, approve EMT pay adjustments.
Uh, Ambus Director Kathy Strooford has submitted for the council's consideration two EMT adjustments, and I did include her, her recommendations in the packet. Uh, number one is Spencer Sunberg to advance from probationary EMT to EMT Step One, effective August eighteenth, two thousand sixteen, and the second one is Joyce Hunstinger to advance to Step Four, effective with her fifteenth anniversary date of September fifth, two thousand sixteen. So we're looking to approve the EMT adjustments for Sunberg and Hunsticker as presented.
Comments, questions? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the EMT adjustments for Sunberg and Hunstiger as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Approve agreement for professional services, BDPI grant application.
Um, as you know, the EDA is, is working on a, a BDPI grant application to extend water sewer in the street and electric to the racetrack property that the city owns, the east half of the racetrack that we actually own, we would extend a road, uh, down to meet that property line. Uh, we're looking to apply for this grant application, and, uh, we've been working with SEH, with Heidi Pepper at SEH for that, for that grant, and she has submitted to me, uh, they do need to have some preliminary engineering done in order for the grant application. So she's submitting that to us as a lump sum of two thousand dollars, and then that fund, if we, that dollar amount, if we are successful in getting the grant, then that goes, it's qualified grant expense, so we're fronting it now, if we're successful, then it can get paid with the grant money, if we're not successful, then that was an expense that we incurred for the, for the opportunity to apply. So I did include the copy of it, it's very brief, uh, just to reviewing the depths and, and providing, uh, information for the grant application on probable costs, and so that's what they're trying to do, is really get a good handle on what the probable costs are. And so we're looking to approve the agreement for professional services for the prelim engineering for the BDPI grant application.
Questions, comments?
I, I think it's a good idea, rather, I mean, go for that grant, it's, it's gonna cost us more than two thousand dollars to do that, if we have a better chance of getting it.
Right.
By all means.
Yep.
If it looks like we're serious enough.
And, and this grant, um, would pay for fifty percent of the costs of the infrastructure improvement, so.
The only question I have is, on page thirty, um, the expense is not included in the lump sum. Lump sum, we figure, is at two thousand dollars? Is there any chance that that's gonna go way above, because they've got these expensive overtime, or requiring higher than regular rates and all that?
Well, I, I, I asked her about that, and she said, they very seldom go over that, and because we were able to provide them fairly new records of that project over there, they're not gonna have to do a lot of onsite, so, um, and they also would use the LiDAR, and they've got a lot of tools at their disposal now, so she said that's kind of in there and if something really odd happens, and I, we don't expect that.
Any other questions, comments? Do I have a motion to approve the agreement for professional services for preliminary engineering for BDPI grant applications?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Keith. Any other comments, concerns? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven F, approve payment voucher number one, Oak Street.
Uh, this is the first, uh, request we've had for a payment from StanTech for the Oak Street project, uh, they've, uh, at the original contract was three hundred thousand four seventy-seven, that was completed to date as of the date of this was two sixty-nine, two twenty-nine, they do retain five percent, so we are looking for a, a net amount due of one fifty-three seventeen ninety-three.
Questions, concerns?
My completed-to-date number is wrong. It's one fifty-eight two twenty-nine forty. What'd you?
It's one...
One fifty-eight two twenty-nine. One fifty-eight, not two sixty-nine.
Two twenty-nine.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Thought that math didn't look quite right.
So the net amount due is still one?
One fifty-three seventeen ninety-three.
Okay.
And we're done out there for this year, they'll be doing the second lift next year.
Right. And then at that time, if there's any places that have sunk, they fix them?
Right, and the reason we leave that for a year is we like to go through a freeze thaw whenever we do underground.
Yep.
And then if we do find, and there's been times, usually it's in the water line somewhere, if there is any problems, uh, the, this wat- project actually went pretty smoothly, as far as the utilities go, so we don't anticipate anything, but it's better to see, to wait for a year, or a freeze thaw season, I should say.
Do I have a motion to approve payment voucher number one for Oak Street project of a hundred and fifty thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety-three cents?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dave, do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Heidi. Any other comments, concerns? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven G, airport land lease agreement, Mueller.
Uh, we currently have a couple different land lease agreements at the airport, we do have one with Dennis Mueller, and he rented a hundred and three acres, uh, for six thousand eighty-nine fifty, and for two thousand seventeen, that's gonna be reduced to eighty-point-six-two acres because of the construction that's going on out there, both for where the turnarounds are gonna be, which will be more of a permanent adjustment, but also, there's areas that have to be graded down for some slopes, so, uh, for two thousand seventeen, that won't be available to him. So his new contract for two thousand seventeen only is proposed at five thousand two forty-thirty for that lease, the lower amount of acres, and then we'll go back into our three-year contract then when it starts with eighteen, with whichever number of acres we end up having available at that time. So, and also, as you recall, they started paying personal property tax, so we do give a credit for that, they pay the tax, we reduce the rent, and that won't be known until the first part of the year. So we are looking to approve the two thousand seventeen land lease agreement with Dennis Mueller.
Questions, comments? The property tax thing kind of throws a wrench in some of our lease agreements, as far as what actually we're gonna get paid, so.
Our net amount, uh, revenue to the city went down when they started doing the property tax, because it goes to the township and the school and the county. I actually checked with the county, if we put it all in CRP, if we'd be money ahead, and they said, well, they're thinking, a lot of airports are inquiring about that, and they're thinking that because it's still revenue-producing at that point, that, then we have to pay the property tax, so, they, they haven't said for sure, but it's looking like that's the way the state's gonna rule on that.
No, for...
Do I have a motion to approve two thousand seventeen land lease agreement with Dennis Mueller?
So moved.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Keith. Any other comments, concerns? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Unfinished business, animal impound.
Uh, I just wanted to put on the agenda to update a little bit on the, uh, ideas and proposals for the animal impound, and we had talked about outsourcing it, uh, with the, the clinic in Melrose, and they had agreed to do that, but we hadn't had a chance to test it till yesterday, because we just haven't had any impounded animals, and this happened to be an impounded cat that they took. So it worked, it worked really well, um, but we haven't had a lot of time to, um, try it out, because we just haven't had impounded dogs to do that. And the other, other thing that there, we looked at, you know, after we'd cleaned up the kennel and bought the raised pet beds and those, those types of things, but, um, so if we're going to continue on the outsourcing part of it, we probably still will have to have like a overnight holding pen or over weekend pen, so we'll still have to do some, some things here, but won't be long-term, so that'll be good, I think, and, and at least that's the direction that we're going. And Matt's here, he can talk to you about his discussions with them over in Melrose, or if you have any more questions or comments, or anything you want us to know.
I guess the only question I've got is, what kind of costs are we looking at, you know, as far as them taking it?
Well, how they, how they work it out is if, and Matt, maybe you can fill me, fill them in on how this works, 'cause it's if somebody redeems it and takes it back, or if it gets adopted out, they're all, it's all different.
So when we bring them an animal, there's a, uh, like an assessment fee, where the vet assesses them, and then, uh, it's twelve dollars a day for a boarding fee, and then if the property owner, or, I mean, the, the owner of the animal comes to pick, to reclaim them, then they pay the cost, and the vet's clinic bills, and all the shots and everything that's necessary to release the animal, and then if the animal isn't claimed, then, uh, they'll either try and adopt it out, or it ends up at the Humane Society in St. Cloud, and then the city would have a, a reduced rate they'd give us, so the maximum would probably be like one twenty-five an animal, if it goes to the Humane Society, if it makes that far and it's not reclaimed.
Okay.
Matt, I have a question, um, I used to work for Tri-County Humane Society, I did the surgery there for ten, eleven years, they charge when they take in an animal, are they gonna charge us, or no?
They request a donation sometimes.
Oh, okay.
That's how it is, or, so I've been told, and then that'd be included in our cost with...
Okay.
Melrose.
Thank you.
So, what it does for us is it, it gives us an outlet for the animals, in a sense, plus then, like this cat we had yesterday was essentially infested and needed vet care immediately, plus then it also enforces our vaccination policies and things like that.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I know the dog pound up there, we really aren't equipped to hold them for any length of time.
No, I think max here would be seventy-two hours, from five o'clock on Friday till Monday morning.
Yep.
And in between there, we'd probably hold them two days to allow time for somebody local to catch up to them, and if not, then we'll move them on.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, there's no action on that, there's just information. Eight B, LED street lights?
I just wanted to bring up, you know, we had sent out to you earlier, and I resent it again today, about a little kind of a schematic of Sinclair, you know, and Oak Street with LED lights, and they're numbered like one, two, three, four, five, and I had asked that, 'cause they're all, they're different, like, the ones are the same, and the twos are the same, but they're different wattages, and they're different colors of LED lights, and we just want to, we'd like to, um, in September, be able to purchase enough LED lights to do Main Street in the decorative lights, fixtures, so that whole row will be the same lights, and so we want to start embarking on our LED conversion, I guess you want to call it, and in looking at what we have, costs we've had for streetlight re... it, and in looking at what we have, costs we've had for streetlight repairs and everything, we believe in our existing budget, we would be able to fund about sixty of the lights. So if you figure six-thousand dollars, we'd probably be able to, to do yet this fall. And so I just wanted everybody to get one last chance to get out there and take a look at the ones and see, do you have a preference? If you don't, that's fine. Some like them brighter, some like them more yellow, some like them more white, and we wanted to make sure everybody had the opportunity to look at them, if you're out past dark. So.
In my age, they all look alike. I can't tell the difference.
If they look alike to you, then that's fine.
Yeah. Yep.
But, so we'll just get that moved, and then you'll be involved in the actual decision to purchase them and, and move forward. I just wanted to make, bring it up again, that we want to make sure to move this forward, and I only hadn't heard back from a lot of you on your preferences, so.
I know when I looked at them, there was, you really had to look close to see if there's any differences or not, but...
If you squint at them, you can tell the difference.
Yeah, you can, you can tell if you look at them long enough, and from different angles, it does come up, so. My, my recommendation's in already, so.
Good.
I just have to get out there.
Okay. No new business. That takes us to our consent agenda. We have our schedule of claims, unpaid claims of eight-hundred-and-ten-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars and eighty cents, which is also our total. July checks totaling nine-hundred-and-four-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars and forty-seven cents. We have Sox Center Youth Hockey Association submitted an application and permit for a one-day temporary on-sale liquor license for a concert at the Sox Center Civic Arena on October eighth, 2016. Fee and certificate of insurance has been provided, and we also have a request from Pam Boardman for the Grillin' and Chillin' event on September tenth, 2016, for approval of the road closure for Park Road. Is there anything else, concerns, questions? If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any other questions or concerns? Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five in favor, none against. Informational items, so I remind the council that Vicky is going on vacation, so you will be gone for two weeks, so have a good time.
Oh, my gosh.
She deserves it. And with that, who brings us to the end of our agenda? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
A motion by Dave, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five in favor, none against.